Good morning, everyone. So I took my opening statement from yesterday and pared it way down because half of it won't make sense this morning. So we're going to start over. So welcome to the May 8th board meeting. We're cooking, I'm just going to read because I'm, that's where I'm at. We're kicking things off with a fresh mindset and a positive tone. And I wanted to thank everyone for being here today and for all of the great work that we had yesterday. With a board this large and made up of numerous viewpoints, it's essential that we all operate following the established rules and various guidance to ensure success. They've always been in place, but they weren't always enforced consistently. And that's my goal is a DDFO is just to make sure that we're all on the same page and doing what we're supposed to be doing. With the recent changes in resources, which we talked about yesterday and respecting all of your time as volunteers. We also want to streamline as much as possible, just to make room for your ideas and to make sure that we can be successful. So if you guys have any ideas on how we can do that, make sure to let me know. I appreciate your understanding and your grace for my new role in this. I wanted to thank Mary Ann and Laura, I'm pretty sure you guys know them, they're back there. They do awesome summaries for the meeting today because I cannot keep up with everything that's going on. And I wanted to make sure you guys knew why McKinsey was up here with me, something new that I thought would be good to do. McKinsey is going to be in charge of our pre informational questions and our follow up questions. So I believe in the past, and correct me if I'm wrong, I think it was easy for things to get dropped. So McKinsey is here with a huge spreadsheet already and she'll track any questions that come out of the meeting and anything that we need to follow up on. And this also will go into future meetings. So if we have subcommittee meetings coming up where you guys know you're going to have questions for one of the presenters. If you guys can just send them to us, especially to that Hanford Advisory Board at hanford.gov. McKinsey is tracking all of them and we'll get them to the presenters beforehand so that hopefully the presentations will be more successful in that moment. And again, not waste anyone's time. And then we'll be sure to follow up with things as we go. So with that, let's make today a great meeting. Thanks, guys.
All right. And our boring administrative review things. As a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and we have posted the Hanford site YouTube channel. We'd appreciate it if you'd all sign in. If you're in the room, we have a sign in sheet up front. If you're online, we'd like you to enter your name and affiliation into chat so we can record this attendance per Federal Advisory Committee Act guidelines. Today is a little different than yesterday. The setup looks the same, but it effectively works like a subcommittee meeting where everyone is welcome to join and participate. So, and if you'd like to, you'll probably want to make sure you're in front of a microphone. So everyone in the room and online can hear you. And that's about it for me, I think. Well, over to you, Susan.
Good morning, everyone. And just as a heads up, Chandra told me as I walked in, the air conditioning is broken. So the doors will be open in the back. Make yourself comfortable. Since we're not going to be here a whole day, it should be a little better. But just, just so you know, we've already tried to, to deal with that situation. Thank you, agencies for bringing this presentation, this discussion to us. We've been waiting anxiously for the topic. And so I'm not going to waste a lot of time saying, saying anything. Why don't we just go quickly go around the room, both physical room and virtual and introduce so we know who's on, who's involved. Chris, you want to start us off?
Chris Sutton, local environmental interest.
Rob Parmley, non-union, non-management employees.
Pam Larson, Benton County.
Tom Sicilia, Oregon Department of Energy.
Meever, Hanford Challenge.
Susan Coleman, Public at Large.
Rebecca Holland, Hantec.
Brian Ivy, Public at Large.
Rob Davis from the city of Pasco.
Annie McCartney, EPA.
Ryan Miller, Ecology.
Scott Green, Department of Energy, alternate DDFO.
Mackenzie Dublock, Kiloi, Street Legal, Supporting DOE.
Megan Tripp, Department of Energy, DDFO.
And I'm Josh Patnod, the head facilitation team. We also have a lot of virtual attendees. So I'm going to run down the list as I see them in teams. You'll have the chance to open up your microphone and introduce yourself. We'll start with Roberto.
Robert Amijo, EPA.
Renee Brooks. Chuck Lepresty. Chuck Terrelli.
Chuck Terrelli, City of Kenwood.
Patrick Conrad.
Patrick Conrad, HMIS.
Dan Solitz.
Dan Solitz, Member of the Public.
Dana Cowley.
Hello, Dana Cowley, HMIS, thank you.
Matt Hendrickson.
Well, Matt Hendrickson, Oregon Department of Energy, alternate member.
William Hudson.
Bill Hudson, Department of Ecology.
Michelle Jones.
Michelle Jones, Department of Ecology.
Kermit Mannkiller.
Our Kermit Mannkiller in this first tribe.
Kevin Danby.
Kevin Danby, Grant and Franklin Counties.
Larry Brandt.
Larry Brandt, Public at Large.
Liz Matson.
Liz Matson with Hanford Challenge, good morning.
Matthew Campbell.
Matthew Campbell, CTUIR, alternate.
Dana McFadden.
Dana McFadden, Ecology.
Megan Perkins.
Megan Perkins, Department of Health.
Ben Pruitt.
Ben Pruitt, Washington Department of Ecology, good morning.
Morning. Rick Orme, sorry if I pronounced that wrong.
No, that was correct.
Thank you. Rose. That's Rose Ferry, and we have Simone Anter.
Rose Ferry, Yakima Nation. I'm sorry.
No problem. And Simone.
Simone Anter, Columbia River Keeper, alternate.
And rounding back to Chuck Lepresty.
President.
Okay. I think that's everyone around our physical and virtual tables. With that, I think we're ready to hand it off to our, our presenters. We have Ben Vanna in the room. And Anne McCartney to provide perspective. Would you like to introduce yourself?
My name is Ben Vanna, DOE, Circula SME and previous 324 project manager. Thank you for your patience and having me back since I was here last November.
Good to go. All right. Do I have anything I can carry to get up and point at slides or no? Sorry, was that? Do I have anything, am I able to get up and point at slides or do you guys at the mic or no? We don't have anything available. You can point if you'd like, and I'll try to follow along with the mouse for those on Teams. Sounds good. Alrighty, so I was here last November, giving you guys an update, committed to come back with the presentation. And on where we're going with the project or proposed to be going with the project. And that is what I am here for now. If you can go to the next one. So purpose, wanted to explain our proposed change to the 3296 waste site cleanup. And this is, wanted to give you guys courtesy heads up. On the, this is largely the presentation we'll be giving to the public. We do have a public comment period coming up in June, June 9th to July 9th. And there is a public meeting that's currently scheduled for June 30th in the evening, 5:30. And there will be announcements going out for all that. But just as a courtesy, we know you, you as stakeholders do have constituents that are going to be asking you questions. So wanted to give you guys a courtesy heads up, a briefing on this. It also gives us an idea before we go out for public comment. If there is parts of this that are unclear, stuff you'd like to hear a little bit more on. We may be able to integrate that ahead of the public meeting. So, and let's see, procedure wise, are people allowed to ask me questions during this or do they need to wait to the end? The way we'd like to do it is to run through the presentation, provide the other regulatory agencies a chance to provide their perspective. And then we'll move to board questions. Sounds good. Yeah, if you guys have any questions or if anything is unclear, please write it down and ask me at the end. So agenda, I'll give a quick overview of the project. Some of you have heard this at least a dozen times or more, but just for those who haven't. As well as I'll talk about the change conditions that we encountered, which led us to an evaluation of alternatives. And eventually the selection of a preferred alternative, the new proposed direction for the project. That will be proposing to the public for feedback. And I will cap it off with talking about our groundwater monitoring program for the site. All right, next one, please. So I can just look at your computer. There we go. So this is a 324 building. It's a HAZCAT II nuclear facility. What that means, it does have radiological material in there. It was built in 1966 for nuclear R and D purposes. It's in Hanford's 300 area, so pretty close to town and PNNL. Which you can see that little arrow pointing from the site. It's that red dot there roughly. And it is close to the Columbia River as well. So that building, as I was saying, it's used for nuclear R and D purposes, supported some pretty important programs. We have Eisenhower's Atoms for Peace Initiative. And that was, okay, we've, we've discovered we can use nuclear materials for war. But what about energy for positive helpful purposes? So we've supported that program. It also supported vitrification of high activity nuclear materials. So you guys have heard about WTP, but 324 gets spotlight. We did it here first for vitrifying some very highly active nuclear material and the glass logs. So over the course of that time, the 30 years of operation, there were a few accidents. And that is what brings us here today to talk about the result of one of those. Just to point out, sorry about the 3296 waste site. That is the contaminated soil located beneath the building. It is completely, completely covered by the building's foundation. We've had ongoing monitoring in the previous decade of the soil below the building. And after we had to remove those probes due to some preliminary remediation activities. We stepped up our groundwater monitoring of the downstream wells and haven't detected any, any spikes or increases. So no detection or movement down to groundwater from that waste site. Next, please. All right. So back in 2009, bit of history, we're getting this building ready for demo. No longer had a purpose, was a great service to us, but it was time to, as with the other hundreds and hundreds of buildings in the 300 area that were taken down and wayside remediated. This was the next one up on the list. So as they were going to clean out the bottom of the hot cell, and I should explain what the hot cell is. That's pictured on the right over here. That's the outline of B cell. These were the rooms where the scientists conducted their experiments with the nuclear materials. This cell is about 30 feet high, four to five foot thick walls shielding up to a million hour per hour, which is a very high number. And the way the scientists did their experiments was using essentially robotic arms. And a crane at the top of the hot cell to manipulate stuff. And the hot cell actually goes 10 feet below grade. And our wonderful scientists, while they were doing their experiments, they didn't always remove the experiments when they were done with them. They just sometimes drop them to the bottom of the hot cell where they couldn't quite be reached. So bottom of the hot cell looked like the floor of a teenager's bedroom, pretty dirty, couldn't quite see it. And in 2009, as part of the cleanup effort, we're clearing out the stuff from the bottom of the hot cell. And we noticed there was a hole in the floor. That's not really what you want to find in a room that's supposed to protect and shield, contain nuclear materials. So part of that investigation, which is seen on the picture on the left, we had to dig a pit down next to the facility. And we pushed in probes to get an idea of, okay, there, there's a hole in the bottom of the hot cell. Is there anything in beneath it? That's when we discovered the 3296 waste site. So there is contaminated nuclear material below there. And that's actually a picture, I believe, of them collecting the soil samples. And fortunately, we have the 325 building right next door, one of the few facilities at the time that was able to process those high activity readings for us. And so what we discovered was directly below the hot cell, it appeared that the contamination went straight down. That's shown by those yellow spikes. So as they're pushing the probes beneath the building, pretty far beneath the building. They, you'd see a flat line, no, no radiation detected, then boop, high activity right below a certain part of the floor. Because it's, it's a floating slab, so there's a joint. When the, when the nuclear material, the highly acidic solution ate its way through the stainless steel liner in the hot cell. It leaked into that joint and appeared to go straight down for those readings that were collected over, I think it was 2010 through 2014 timeframe. And that's what the design was based on. That was what we found. And where that occurred was in 1986, scientists were vitrifying a highly concentrated solution, acesium strontium. It was very acidic. When they overflowed the melter, that solution got on the floor, couldn't quite see it. It collected in a low spot in the sump, ate its way through the liner, got into the soil. So acesium strontium, those are the major components. There are some very low amounts of alpha emitting materials, plutonium, americium. Which are not really the, the major concerns. All right, we can go to the next one. So change conditions. So based on that data, our 2013 rod was designed around the, the cesium strontium spill. Going pretty much right below, directly down from those joints in the floor. And the modeling that PNNL did based on those readings where we were detecting activity levels in the soil. They said, okay, your hottest spot, the bulk of your material that you need to remove is going to be about six to eight feet below the hot cell. Cesium at the top, because it doesn't have, it's, has a higher affinity to bond to the soil than the strontium does. So that bonded first, then your strontium was a bit below that. And the design was, hey, if this is, this stuff is right below the hot cell, six to eight feet, very little lateral movement. Well, we've got exactly what we need, a building already on top of it with the ventilation and filtration we need and all the shielding we need. Where we can make a hole in the floor, put it in a John Deere excavator arm and scoop it up. And it'll be safely contained in a hot cell and we can move it to another hot cell and safely transport that to Erdef. Our onsite circle landfill. So that was what everything was based on. What we determined in 2022, as part of this, as part of the effort to start remediating the waste site. We had to, if you're digging below the hot cell, you're digging out soil from below the foundation. And this is very sandy soil at this location. So if you've ever been at the beach and tried to dig a hole, you got more sand, sorry, more sand caving in. So we had to support the hot cell. And that required drilling into the soil around the hot cell, constructing concrete columns. And as part of that effort, we're actually drilling in some horizontal ones to support the B cell door. What we detected was high levels of contamination outside of the area it was supposed to be. Wasn't near the groundwater, but it was outside of that excavation reach and design that we had for our remote excavator arms. So it called into question, do we need to, do we need to reevaluate this? Or can we just put in longer arms and redo the design and go cap, try to capture it all? Because under the current design, we couldn't remove all the high activity soils. But then there were a few other things that were, were occurring. So it was a collective issue of challenges. We had a, we realized that, all right, we'd have to redo the structural design. That took quite a while to do. Because if we're, if we're digging below a HAZCAT II nuclear facility, we got to get everything right. Especially in the event, unfortunate event of an earthquake in the middle of us doing this effort. Unlikely, but still something we planned for to keep the community safe. We would, we'd need to be careful there and we'd have to redo the design. The, another factor, oh yeah, sorry, where I was going with that is the, the high activity material we found was actually located where we would be doing, putting in our structural stabilization. So we'd have to move that out. Then the third effort issue was the aging equipment that we have in the facility is built in 1966. One of those cranes is old enough to be collecting a pension. Wish I was, but so it's old. And as we noticed, starting in 2019, we've, we started having more and more issues with those cranes. So, and it was more and more failures of not just the cranes, but equipment supporting the cranes. And we realized if we're going to be going through this significant effort, we want to swap those cranes out as a backup. We had actually ordered two backup cranes. But as you, as you start looking at these collection, collective amount of issues, how do they go together and affect your project risk? We realized, hey, let's, let's reevaluate before we take the risk of. Spending all that money and time to redo the design, to put workers at risk, to go replace the cranes. Is there another option that we need to be considering? So that was, we can go to the next one. Oh yeah, wait, not yet. So I should have said on this one, wish I had my little laser pointer. So the image, the, the green, outer green box, that's the, the footing of B cell. And then the inner green box is the inner wall. And originally, and this is modeling PNNL did for us, of kind of a, hey, here's your one hour per hour, greater than one hour per hour levels of contamination. Originally, our understanding of the waste site was there wasn't a whole lot of lateral movement. Or a whole lot of waste between the inner green box and the outer green box. But then the additional, many samples that we collected during our structural modifications, the drilling we had to do, that gave us a lot more data. And we did actually do additional drilling around the hot cell. We said, hey, if we found this hotspot over here, could there have been anything else that we missed that we need to be concerned about? We want to make sure it's not going outside the footprint of the building. We did check that and didn't find very much outside that outer wall. I should say the outer foundation of B cell. All right, now we can go to the next one. And I'll be talked, as I talk about the alternatives we, we looked at, I'll be mentioning a retrieval structure, a temporary retrieval structure. So the original 2013 rod envisioned that you'd be able to go through the building, get all of your high activity soil out, using those remote excavator arms. Digging out the soil through a hole in the floor of B cell. And then there would be some lower level soils left that we could go capture after building demolition. Using conventional open air excavation, a lot easier, a lot quicker. But based on these new readings and information that we have, we realized that is not safe to go do. We can't go, go execute doing an open air excavation since our excavator arms can't reach all the high activity stuff. So we would need a retrieval structure over the waste site afterwards, even if we were to get this current approach to work. And by retrieval structure, this is something we've used numerous times at Hanford, these types of structures. In fact, in our focus feasibility study, proposed plan that we have, we do cite Idaho, one of our other DOE sites in the complex. Using these structures a lot to specifically go dig out waste sites safely. But we do have very similar structures at Hanford that we have used as well. So it's essentially, if you can, in the bottom left image, essentially got your steel frame with a very thick and. Get them quite thick, shielded membrane pulled over it, hold tight. And those can go be quite large. As you can see, there's excavation equipment inside of that. You can attach your exhaust filters and filtration to that too, so that anything you're digging up and getting into the air, you can pull out of the air. And provide safe conditions in there and also protect the public from any releases. So this is just our conceptual, our conceptual design of what that would look like. All right, go to the next one. So evaluation of alternatives. I've talked about the change conditions that challenge what is written in the 2013 rod, which can't be executed as written. So what do we need to do? So EPA is the one that kind of selects that path forward of which route we need to go down. And it was decided, a focused feasibility study needs to be done. Let's look at other alternatives and evaluate those to see what we can do to safely and, and effectively remediate this waste site. So we're looking at major things like schedule, cost, short terms, implement safety and effectiveness, long-term safety effectiveness. So it's that document that we developed took over a year to do. And that was sent over to EPA for review with the tribal nations on copy back in December. So that was our draft day, which we're very close to finalizing. In tandem with that, we have our proposed plan, which is very close to being finalized. That's what contains, we use the information from the focus feasibility study, looking at alternatives. And we select a preferred alternative to present to the public and our stakeholders and say, here's what we think is our best option forward. To, to go forward and remediate the waste site. So that's what the public comment period is going to be on. Take a look at the proposed plan. What do you, what do we think about it? You guys agree with it, have any different ideas, thumbs up, thumbs down? We're looking for that public feedback. And I know I've heard some other ideas for what we could do for the waste site from this group. So interested to, to hear those again. I was enjoy, because we did consider some of those too. Public comment period, I mentioned that is required for this. We will be hosting one, as I mentioned, June 9th through July 9th, the 30 days. If there is a request for extension, we are required to comply with that and extend it for Circula. So just be aware of that if people need more time or if your constituents do. And then once we have gone out and concluded with our public comment period and our public meeting, which was one on June 30th at 5:30. DOE and EPA are developing the rod amendment and responsive dissummary. So we look forward and want to hear feedback from the public. We're required to respond to the, the significant comments that we do receive. And I know we have already received some that will be addressed during that. So that, I just wanted to give you an idea of the circle of process and the timing going forward. And I should have mentioned the focus feasibility study that basically says, evaluates whether or not we need to use the building. If it's cost effective, schedule efficient, safe, continue using the building in an alternative or to not. So let's talk about those alternatives. Go to the next slide. So we evaluated two alternatives. Now we had done a previous alternatives analysis in the past. This was, this was a focused feasibility study. So we're looking at just the two primary ones that we agreed would have the most value. So there's a coupled approach. That is where we would still use the building, very similar to what is in the rod. Where you have partial excavation. Hey, we put in so much time and effort into developing this. Under the coupled approach, we would be able to remove some high activity soils that, if I remember correctly, two and a half to three years earlier. Then under the decoupled approach. So you'd have some partial removal of the soils from the environment. Before you demo the building and then have to build a containment structure over the remainder of the waste site and dig that up. Now the decoupled approach, that is the preferred one being proposed to the public. Under that, you skip that whole initial step. So looking at, excuse me, looking at the pictures on the bottom. That is the coupled approach showing, hey, we're, we're going to go through B cell, excavate what we can, what we can reach. We can't get all the high activity soil, but we'll remove what we can. Excavate what we can, what we can reach. We can't get all the high activity soil, but we'll remove what we can. Uh, and then once we're done with that, I'll shift to demo the building and building our containment structure. Under the decoupled approach, you essentially eliminate that first. Uh, that first picture. So let's take down our aging building, uh, demolish it. And then we'll build our containment structure over the waste site, uh, with the appropriate, uh, shielding, safety precautions in place. And tackle it all at once. And the coupled approach, that one, uh, would be. Let's see, I believe it was four years longer, uh, than the decoupled approach, just because of all of the, and it would cost. Forty-six, sorry, three and a half years. Longer than the decoupled approach. Uh, to go, and it would cost more, just because you have that upfront step of trying to make the building work. You're, you're replacing all of that old aging equipment, uh, to increase your likelihood of success. Uh, we have to redo the structural mods, which is supporting the B cell. So it doesn't shift while we're digging out soil from below the foundation. So there's a lot of upfront effort, uh, in that, uh, as well as risk to the workers who would be doing that. Cause they would, as I'll talk about on the next slide, I'll show you the both radiological and industrial hazards they're faced with. To go execute that work. Uh, but as I mentioned, big benefit of the coupled approach was you do get some, uh, some high activity soil out of the environment earlier. Uh, but in the end, with the decoupled approach, your entire project timeline does finish three and a half years quicker. And, uh, costs significantly less because we don't have to try to make the building cooperate. Next slide. And what do I mean by the decoupled approach is the safest for workers? So in the bottom left picture, our airlock, uh, which is, it connects the number of hot cells that we have. Uh, in order to access the cranes, workers are going up on a man lift, uh, to be able to go service those. Same with the crane doors. And so the work of replacing the cranes would be, uh, dangerous from both a radiological and an industrial hazard standpoint. Uh, which is something we have to take into account. Uh, in the picture to the right, that's just showing our, our wonderful little drill rig who, uh, did a lot of solid work drilling the holes through the floor of, uh. The rooms around B cell, uh, in order to inject the, the concrete and grout into the, into the soil and create a concrete column. That we were going to attach to B cell and provide that structural stability. But. Industrial hazard, you've got a drill rig that workers are next to, uh, drilling down, radiological hazard as you're drilling down, soil is coming up. We had to capture all that and it, we had, did have some events that we had to work through. We shut down for a year. In order to more safely operate and reduce the contamination events, uh, so I know there's some good work from people in this room, uh, that went into that. Uh, and reduce contamination events to zero for quite a while. So those are some of the hazards that we're looking to avoid under the decoupled approach. Next slide, please. So I've explained the approaches, uh. Like I said, please jot down if anything's unclear, what are we looking for more information on as we get to our public comment period next month? Uh, so that we can see about trying to integrate that into our presentation if possible. Uh, so current groundwater monitoring, just wanted to reassure people, monitoring is still ongoing. Uh, there's no work being done around the waste site. Uh, we're still monitoring monthly to check for cesium strontium in the groundwater downstream of three twenty-four. Those are the two wells circled in green. And then, uh, we have not detected increases in cesium strontium in those samples. Uh, above the drinking water level, there is historic cesium strontium contamination in the groundwater. Uh, it's not new, not a surprise. Uh, that happened before the spill in nineteen eighty-six that we were detecting that, I blame the three to forty building, but it no longer exists. Uh, but it's, we do monitor, try to check if there's any, any increases. Uh, and making sure that it's below drinking water standard. That allows us to also, when we're doing the work, the preliminary remediation activities, we could check if anything we were doing was affecting the waste site. All right, next one. Uh, key takeaways. So as I mentioned, the preferred alternative is a decoupled approach, uh, being proposed by DOE and EPA. Uh, and it is, uh, safer, quicker, and it costs less. Uh, both alternatives do excavate soils to achieve the cleanup level. So they're both feasible. Uh, it's not that. One isn't feasible, it's just from a cost and scheduling and safety standpoint, one is better than the other, but both could be executed. Uh, if there is a preference from the public. And then, uh, we will be managing, uh, there's a concern that, okay, your, your waste center to the building, how are you going to keep it safe? During demolition of the, of the facility, uh, that is definitely something we are aware of and precautions will be taken during the demolition. Uh, cause water usage is typically performed during demolition. And the only thing that's going to mobilize our waste site, reason why it's so mobile now is the building foundation covers it, no water is getting to it. So it's not moving. But during demolition, how are you going to manage your water DOE to make sure you don't impact the waste site? How are you going to seal off water from getting to the, uh, contaminated soil? So that'll, we, we will be, we are aware that we'll be managing that. There'll be more information available on that as we get closer to that design. Remediation design. Uh, and then just to reiterate, contamination is not spreading, haven't detected any increases, uh, in groundwater. Why that is important, uh, is that, that gives us the reassurance that we've got time to think. And don't need to take rapid action in terms of, uh, expediting this plan, which I was talking about. But it is a priority for DOE to go do this, same with EPA. But just didn't want anyone thinking up in arms, oh. It's, it's a threat, it's an immediate risk. Uh, but it is, as I mentioned, it's, it's close to town, close to the river. But no movement. Next one, just for your awareness, uh, so these will. Uh, these slides will be in, uh, included in the public comment presentation. So just so you can see the links that we'll be sending out. If you guys want to check that out ahead of time, uh, just, uh, if your constituents have questions, next one, please. And then this will be part of the, another slide in the public comment period, which notice will, pre-notice will be going out shortly. So as I mentioned, uh, public comment period, June ninth to July ninth, uh, there will be a, uh. Uh, email to submit public comments to, they can also be made at the public meeting. Uh, and our P O C for that is Danic Ribble. Uh, I know our, if there are people with, uh, that need accommodations. Or, uh, she is the one to contact for that as well. Next one, please. All right, I'd ask questions, but we've got to go for an EPA and ecology perspective first.
Yep. So I'd like to start with ecology. Do we have anyone on deck to find perspective?
Actually, uh, have EPA go first.
All right, then over to Ann McCartney.
Yeah, thanks Ben for the presentation. Um, so I do want to reiterate that we welcome comments on both alternatives. And we look forward to moving closer to removal of this material away from the Columbia River and the operating facilities. Uh, I would also like to emphasize that both alternatives do achieve the same end state using that protective structure. And, uh, this is going to be a very lengthy endeavor, unfortunately. Um, so it requires careful planning and coordination and we look forward to continuing to share progress as we move towards a detailed design. Um, which comes in the future. As Ben mentioned, we have a conceptual, you know, theory at this point that this is, that the work today is based off of. Um, but the details really come over, over the coming years. Um, following the selection of which remedial alternative we're moving forward with and, uh, the approval of the, of a rod amendment. Um, both alternatives can be achieved safely and will result in less risk for spread of contamination than the original remedy that included the open air. Uh, excavation. So, um, I just wanted to, to mention that again. And that we will also be sending out, uh, consultation offer letters to the tribes in the coming days. Those are in our, uh, approval process right now. So, thank you.
And Michelle, do you have a comment for ecology?
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to say thank you for the presentation and ecology concurs with EPA on the path forward.
All right, thank you very much. With that, I think we're ready to move to questions. Uh, if you'd like to enter Q in the room, you can follow Tom's example by. Flipping your name tent up. If you're online, you can raise your hand in teams. So we're going to start with Tom and then go to Chuck Torelli.
Thanks for the presentation. Uh, it's good to see you. Um, the. Open air excavation, is that, or not opener, the, the excavation in the dome. Um, is that going to be done? With remote excavators to protect the workforce or how, how, how are you going to stop? Uh, contamination spread in the dome, um, from getting everywhere.
So the exact design, this is the conceptual, but the exact design will be finalized as part of, after the rod amendment, uh, but that's still. Was something we had to look at as we're evaluating these alternatives. Uh, so in terms of the current approach forward, once again, conceptual, not finalized, but. Uh, we need shielding over the waste site, which can be provided by, uh, layers of soil. So as you're digging out, you're mixing, uh, some of the high activity soils with clean soils. Uh, and that shield feat of shielding, uh, for the unexcavated parts. So that. Provides, uh, uh, from a Vilar perspective, some safety, uh, but in terms of the remote excavators, uh. It is believed at this time, yeah, they, they will need to either be remotely operated in the little picture. There's a trailer outside of that. So anything we can do to minimize the risk to workers is something we'll be looking at and factoring into that design. Uh, the conceptual design also had a, a nice, uh, shield wall, uh, between the excavators and, and, uh. Workers in lower dose areas. So we'll be taking those precautions. In terms of what about, uh, releases into the air within that structure? Uh, we've done work with the, uh, two pair and a paper before, the air purifying respirators. Uh, we'll have to evaluate that, uh, is that required and what can we do to minimize, uh. Uh, contamination getting into the air as well as we'll definitely have the exhausters with the, the heap of filtration to keep things safe. And, uh, so that, as part of that whole evaluation and planning process that we get into. So we, we've done it at other sites before, we've used these structures here too, uh, but it's, we'll be, we'll be finalizing that design.
All right, next up we have Chuck online.
Hi, uh, Ben, appreciate the presentation. I would like to know what is the timeframe for a decoupled versus the coupled approach. Approach in totality. So if we do the coupled, is that ten years, that window or is it a, or is it, you know, whatever the number is?
And we had just, uh, revise us to, with another scrub. But if I recall correctly, it's eight and a half years for the decoupled. So you've got, uh, a few years for building demolition. So we've got to demolish the building. Uh, and as part of that, there is monolith, we call the monoliths. There's, there's rooms and structures that we will fill with grout. And remove that entire room. Uh, for example, there were tanks, it's called the high level vault that, uh, contains cesium strontium. Uh, contained, uh, don't have a bunch of those tanks full anymore. Uh, but those would get filled with grout and that entire area would be removed as a monolith, same with some of the hot cells. Uh, but once again, that design's not finalized, but that just goes to show it's going to take years to get the building down. Uh, followed by, we're going to need some time to build the containment structure. Um, and then conduct that remediation. So eight years for that. Or eight and a half years for that, I believe. And then it was the new numbers twelve or the, uh, coupled approach. Uh, so why does that take so much longer? That's that upfront. If we're going to be removing some soil, using the building, uh, by excavating through B cell. We want to swap out our, our aging equipment with new reliable equipment, uh, more reliable. Uh, as it gets older, as continued to degrade, uh, so swap out the equipment, we got to redo our structural design and implement it. Uh, that's the drilling I was talking about where they put in the concrete columns and the. Around B cell to help hold it up and, uh, especially support the B cell door. So nothing shifts and your door gets stuck open or stuck shut. Cause that'd be a project killer. Did that answer your question?
Thank you.
Next up we have Mia.
Hi, um, in a similar vein, can you talk about the cost for each alternative? I know you said forty-six percent. Um, but what are the actual numbers for each?
Yeah, so the, looking at, and I'll say it's, uh, the unescalated values. Uh, it's going to be two hundred million, two hundred and two million for the. Decoupled approach, so without using the building, uh, and then four hundred and thirty-eight million. Uh, to do the coupled approach where we'd have to. Essentially get the building to cooperate with us to reliably excavate some of the higher activity soils. That's a big contributor to that upfront cost. Yeah, either way you go, it's quite a large project. Definitely, two oh two and four thirty-eight.
And next up is Chris.
In your draft, I have one question and one comment. In your draft proposed plan. Uh, in your, in your schedule flow diagram, it shows both projects starting at the same time. In practice, would you be able to start one sooner than the other?
Practice, would you? It, once we get the, the go ahead, we're gonna. Yeah, once we get the go ahead, we're starting down either route. So if it's use the building, uh, we're immediately starting the, down that route. If it's demo the building, uh, that's, workers have been working on deactivation activities for non-essential parts. Uh, we'd swap that over to, uh. Complete deactivation. So it's both start at the same time. We're not, we're not waiting or hesitating on either one, if that makes sense.
Yeah. And then my comment on your current groundwater monitoring slide. You have the second bullet says well samples show no increase in three hundred two ninety-six contaminant concentrations. Well, if I'm cynical, I could interpret that as saying, oh, so the groundwater is highly contaminated. It's just not getting more highly contaminated. Um, you might want to put something like. Cesium one thirty-seven concentrations are non-detectable. Her activity is non-detectable. Historically, cesium one thirty-seven has been non-detectable. Something like that to stop someone from thinking, oh, it is, it is contaminated, it's just not getting more contaminated.
I hear where you're coming from on that, yeah. We'll give that some more thought. Thank you. Cause we're trying to keep it simple, but also we don't want to give the impression that it's above the drinking water standards for either of those.
All right, next up is Rebecca.
Hey, thanks for your presentation, Ben. It's good to see you again.
You too.
Um, so I actually have a few questions, but, um, and I can go to the end of the queue. First of all, I would like if you could walk us through the, so. You're going to have a public comment period, which is going to be thirty days, correct? Okay, so then what happens with all the comments that come in? Um, you said that you have to respond to those comments, um, if I heard you correctly.
Yes.
And then what happens?
The significant comments.
The significant comments. So what, uh, yeah, okay. Well, that brings another question, but.
Go for it.
Um, so I don't know how you gauge significant or insignificant, but, um. So do all those comments have to be, um, the significant comments? Do they have to be answered? Back and then the rod amendment happens or can you walk, walk us through that, like the timeline for that?
So, and I should probably clarify what I say significant, significant and relevant. So when I was part of a, of a previous public comment period. Uh, for revising some of, uh, some milestones, there were, there were comments received on totally unrelated work. Uh, such as tank farms. So in terms of if we get a, if, for this, if we get comments on tank farms. Uh, we're not going to respond to that, uh, or if. DOE's preference will not be to respond to that, we still coordinate with our regulator, uh. On that and they have a very powerful say in that. Uh, so it's. Significant and relevant, uh, from that perspective. And what was the rest of your, your question?
So I'm wondering the timeline for that. Once the comment period closes and then you guys go through the comments. Um, deem, you know, what's significant or not and, and respond to those comments. What happens after that?
So as part of the rod amendment that would get issued, it would have the responsiveness summary where it's got the comments we received. As well as a summary, uh, what has been done in the past that I'm aware of, uh, is, I know the HAB is. Uh, what has been done in the past that I'm aware of uh is, I know the HAB has asked, hey, before you guys go out, can you let us know what you're thinking? Or uh, we've done, I've done briefings before on, these were in the case of some milestone negotiations years ago. We got 1,200 comments and the HAB said, great, how'd you respond to that? How'd you respond to our constituents? And we came in and briefed you guys. Uh, so it's, that's, that's one potential path forward. If you guys would like that as well, I, I can't commit to it, but I can say, you know, hey, make it known. Uh, but ended I get that path forward, right? In terms of when the rod amendment goes out, it'll have that comment uh responsiveness summary with it.
Right, so the agencies will evaluate the how the comments affect our preferred alternative. And then that the rod amendment will be drafted and go through a similar review like this proposed plan has gone through over uh months. And um, we are hoping to have a rod amendment finalized next spring.
Okay, yeah, so that's kind of what I was looking for, like after that, then the rod amendment and then more comments. Do people comment on the rod?
No, so, so once the rod amendment goes out, um, there's not another public comment period at that time.
Okay, so next spring-ish.
Ish.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
And I just have another um really quick question about the, the waste. Um, I'm very familiar with the, you know, the dose rates and the, you know, high levels of contamination. I'm wondering if you do this inside of that structure and you're, I, I would assume that you're going to load it into bins similar to like what we were going to load into in B cell or something larger than that. Like, is that waste, is there like a waste acceptance criteria for that, for it to go to ERDA? Or where is that going to go?
So yeah, it, the rod says likely ERDA for an appropriate disposal facility. But those facilities are going to have a waste acceptance criteria that we have to show our waste meets before it can go there.
Right, yeah, I'm just, I mean, it's very high level stuff, so.
Yeah, and if I can chime in on that one too, um, we will need to update the waste management plan for this from the previous one that was done, because when we develop our waste handling design, then we'll need to have a waste management plan that aligns with that.
Okay, all right, thank you. You can put me at the end of the queue.
All right, so for a queue check, we have Pam, Rob Parmley, Rob Davis, Simone Anter. Then we're rounding back to Mia, Tom and Rebecca. Pam, you're up.
Um, the first quick question with a rod amendment, does that have to go through EPA headquarters?
Yes, it does. So um, I'm actually briefing our headquarters on this proposed plan in two weeks.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Um, and my other uh comment concern, unfortunately, uh, the city of Richland's HAB member is not here today. Um, and uh, Ben, have you, have you had a meeting with the city of Richland officials to talk to them about this process and what's going to be happening?
I personally have not. Uh, I know it's on our, on our communications plan uh to have stuffs like that happen. You guys actually got kind of lucky in that you were, as soon as we got approval, your meeting, we wanted to take advantage of, of this date. I'm sure my management has had discussions, but in terms of the formal, yep, we've done that. Uh, it's, it's part of the plan, but you guys were lucky in that we just got approval right before the HAB meeting, as you know, and uh, we came here first.
I would suggest an informal conversation with the city manager. Um, and explain where you're at, that you've done this briefing. And ask him if he thinks um that you should make a similar presentation to the city council. Um, and um, I mean, maybe just handling it with staff would be good. But I've been retired for five years and they don't have anybody that deals with Hanford for the city of Richland. So um, it, it, you, you'll need to make the entree. Thank you very much.
Yep, oh, in fact, our communication staff is here, so did you guys get that ideas in action?
I am not communications, Ben. We will get it written down, yeah. I was looking at the comms plan right now, just to put it on there, but um, yeah, it looks like there's nothing specifically that calls that out, so we'll make action.
Next up, we have Rob Parmley.
Uh, yeah, just a couple of these. One for, just for my understanding, the current groundwater monitoring, when you say those two wells were downgraded, does that mean downgraded to how often you monitor them? Or what does that mean?
Sorry if I misspoke, uh, downgrade, so uh downstream of the building.
Gradiant, so.
Did I, did I write off the double check that, that I wrote there, right?
I, I, I misread that, but uh, oh, what does that mean, downgrade?
So if, if uh, that means we put the well in a location, so if your groundwater is flowing uh in a certain direction past the building, your well has to be, it doesn't help you if your well is, is a, before the building, kind of like if you're hunting deer. You know, you, you gotta be at a location to where uh, I guess you'd be downwind of the deer. But anyway, different example, so yeah, you just want to be at a location where you're capturing groundwater that has passed beneath the building. So in that case, you can detect anything that it may have captured from that location.
How deep are those, those wells?
Uh, let's see, groundwater is about 50 to 60 feet in that location, so they're, they're deeper than that probably.
Okay, um, the other question I have is kind of where Rebecca was heading. Based on the uh feedback from the public resolution, making a final decision, when do you expect to actually start work on whatever uh method you decide to, to use?
Uh, so in terms of when do we start work, as soon as possible? Uh, we're going to be doing what we can to keep the workers there uh busy. So if there's some activities they can do that don't uh jeopardize or impact this, we're going to keep them employed and working. Uh, but as soon as we get a decision, we want to move forward because it does us, uh, you know, does the taxpayer mean included no value if people are waiting? Uh, so there would be
Do you anticipate what, you know, two years, three years?
Oh, sorry, uh, so right amendment is anticipated in, uh, as Annie was saying, spring of next year. Um, so definitely bef, uh, at or before that time, workers are continuing to work out there.
So um, I'll clarify one thing. So the facility demolition, regardless of which alternative we proceed with, is happening under a removal action. And so there's already an action memorandum in place. So there's two types of um, you know, decision frameworks, I guess, under CIRCLA, under the super fund law. There's remedial or there's removal. So the soil remediation that we're talking about today is under the remedial process. And the um, the building demolition is under the removal authority, which DOE is the lead for. And so uh, so what Ben's referencing is that a lot of the facility demolition activities, some of it's already, you know, in planning right now, it's not, which will apply for both alternatives. Just depends on timing of when you move forward with that. And then um, the remedial portion has to go in after this rod amendment into remedial design. So that's the next phase of the CIRCLA process after this is the remedial design. And that's when we get the details really worked out of how this, you know, what the structure will look like. What does the remote handling equipment look like? What does the shielding look like? Um, and so a lot of those details are still to come. But really, both are being considered. And since they're pretty similar in a lot of the ways, a lot of the planning has been able to continue starting now, really. Um, but and, and so like the, the workforce that's working on 324, there is deactivation work they can do now, like removing asbestos and other things that aren't, aren't really um partial to one alternative or another. They had to happen eventually either way. And so as far as the schedule goes, that the timeframe for actually remedying the soils is, is um, will be shown in the proposed. You can see the schedule laid out in the proposed plan, but that is years out because it'll be um after the, all this planning and design is complete.
Okay, again, you say years out, what does that mean?
Well, it's different for each alternative. So um, for the coupled approach where we're using the building, the, as Ben presented, that some of the soils would be remediated sooner. Um, but we still have to get through redoing the structural design. So I think it was like two or three year, probably three years from the rod amendment date to be able to start remediating some of the soils that they could reach. Whereas the other alternative is post-facility demolition for the decoupled. And so that's like, you don't touch the soils basically for, I think, five years. I'm, I'm going from memory, so yeah, that's why I reference the schedule. It'll be easier to see it laid out in the document.
Is that something, if I can ask a question, uh, is that something you guys would find helpful? If we had the, the two schedules, one for each alternative?
I think it would be very, very helpful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, next up is Rob Davis.
Boy, you guys are asking good questions, all the ones in my, off my head. So um, I'm interested in a number of things here, um, but the, I'll ask the first one. Um, we're not creating an orphan waste, are we? Where are we going to put this stuff? Where, where is it acceptable to put these high levels of strontium and cesium on our site in grout? Okay, so you're going to, you're grouting the, the str, the material you're removing, it's going to be grouted and put in a box. Where's it going to go?
ERDA, likely, or an appropriate disposal facility, so I'm going to put that caveat in there. So we've already done a waste profile for that, the cesium strontium. So even though it's, it's high levels, uh, when we look at the ERDA waste acceptance criteria, it is, it can still safely be contained in ERDA. And that caveat that I was talking about, or an appropriate disposal facility, uh, there are small amounts of, of alpha emitting radionuclides in there. So if, as we're digging this up and we're checking, uh, even though we've got an evaluation showing uh, your plutonium levels would be low enough to go under ERDA, that's still something that would be looked at. Uh, does the, does the modeling match what we're finding? We have to verify that. Uh, could you theoretically have true? Highly unlikely based on what we've modeled, but we'd still check on that. True cannot go under ERDA. Uh, transuranic uh waste, sorry. So likely ERDA, but we're checking, if that makes sense. I know there, there is also another concern of uh, is it high level waste that we've received? And that's more of a, less of an activity question, we're below that and more of a process question. Was this, uh, could it be considered that this is waste directly from reprocessing? And that is between uh my legal and the legal departments of those asking, which I can't speak much to.
And that hasn't been decided at this point?
DOE has done its evaluation and we've responded to those. My legal has responded to those concerns, but there are still questions uh that have been uh, to those parties' opinions not addressed. Uh, so I've been allowed to say, yeah, we, we definitely welcome that. If there are concerns from the public and confusion of, hey, we do think this is high level waste. Please make those during the public comment period. It is by no means a, a done, closed off decision. It's something, if we get those comments, that is significant and relevant, and we would respond to that.
Okay, and, and being that the actual disposition is many years away, you're possibly suggesting it wouldn't affect our time, timeframe to get started?
Correct, either way, we've, well, if it's high level waste, then they affect the plan. But uh, it would still have to, you'd still have to put the, the waste site in a safe configuration.
Yeah, thank you.
Next up, we have Simone online.
Hi, thank you uh for the presentation. I have a few follow-up questions. Um, so earlier, sorry, is my feedback really bad?
No, you're good. Um, so earlier Sorry, if everyone wants to turn off the microphones in front of them, that will help with our online participant feedback.
Thank you. Um, yeah, so earlier you said that the original understanding of where the waste was located or the, the contaminated soils um was that there wasn't any, excuse me, lateral movement? Um, but then additional sampling during the modifications of the structure provided some more data after you did some drilling under the hot cell. And you said that you checked outside of the outer wall and you showed that like green box thing. And you said you didn't find very much outside of the outer wall. What does that mean?
Sure, can we go back to that slide if possible with the uh, my little green boxes?
Can do, just a moment.
Thank you. I'll just wait for that to pop up. Thanks. Slide number, oh, need to add numbers to my slides. There we go. So what does it mean when I say there's not much? So in terms of the contamination being outside that inner green box, the inner wall, we had planned for those arms to be able to dig a certain amount laterally. Uh, the thousands of samples that we had collected uh in the early 2010s uh, were showing that your contamination essentially went straight down. So as we were pushing the uh dose rate probes through the piping in the soil, you'd non-detect, non-detect, and then it would rapidly increase uh right below the uh, the joints in the hot cell floor and then rapidly decrease. So we weren't finding a whole lot of lateral movement. Uh, there was some toward the middle of the hot cell, but as we dig a hole in the floor, we can easily get that. What we did find, as once again, we're drilling uh to install the structural mods, was contaminate, contamination over what I'll say one hour per hour, a certain threshold that we set was outside of what our excavator arms could reach uh without significant redesign. Uh, so when we found that, it called into question, uh, hey, we need to, as part of these uh the structural modification effort, since we have the drill rig there, let's drill to the, and we found that to the east. Let's drill to the north, west, south, farther out from the hot cell and those adjacent rooms. And that'll tell us, is it extending much further out than we thought? So we found stuff a little bit further out, but far enough outside of our reach of our excavator arms. But we double-checked much farther out, tens of feet. What is the contamination looking like there? And it was all less than that, uh, that one hour per hour threshold that we set, that we were comfortable with. Does that answer your question, Simone?
Yeah, it did. Um, and then so as part of building, build a tent over the building structure, like how far out past this building structure will that go? Like how many feet?
I'll need to commit that to memory for the public uh comment period. But I, if I'm recalling correctly, I think our design structure was in the, the 40, 40 feet by uh either 80 to 120 feet. So it's uh, the waste site itself, is it massive? It's, it's still pretty, pretty localized from that additional sampling and excavation effort, uh, characterization effort that we did. So did you have any input on that?
It's at least over 100 feet in one of the directions. And the main reasoning for that is because uh, to have a safe layback from the, the waste site. Um, so if you have something digging in a hole 20 feet below grade, so B cell goes below grade and then this contamination begins, right? So um, so the contamination will be at depth, so you have to have a setback from the waste site to have safe slopes, basically, because it'll be so deep. Um, it's not, it's definitely not the biggest hole we've dug, but, but it's, it may be the biggest hole we've dug under a structure. So um, so it, it's, it's a significant dimension for that reason.
And those structures can be, uh, we do have a lot of latitude in what, in what we buy, what we design. Uh, they can get pretty big and Idaho has effectively used them, uh, large structures. Uh, so there is a pedigree that uh, and support for using those. So if, as we uh get down to the finite design, uh, yeah, we're, we like to be a little bit more conservative. Um, it'll be a big structure. In case there's some lateral travel.
That's super helpful. Thank you. Um, just one other question that I think is pretty quick. Um, is there any, so you mentioned that the groundwater is 50 to 60 feet below B cell. And then how low was the lowest contaminated soil sample found? And then do you have a sense for if there's any possibility of finding any other surprise? Soil pockets anywhere um that are contaminated?
Uh, so in terms of surprises, that's, that's part of why uh, it's a big reason why we're going with the decoupled design from a DOE perspective uh is it's a big reason why we were going with the decoupled design from a DOE perspective, uh, is you can still, and especially move away from the approach and the rod is, it taught us, we don't quite know, it's, it's not very easy to sample below the building. You'd essentially have to, uh, make Swiss cheese of the soil to figure out if there's any other preferential flow, uh, flow pass or hotspots, uh, but with being able to remove the facility and build that tent over it, that gives you a lot of latitude and it's a lot easier to go chase those, uh, hotspots. Uh, and then in terms of the, uh, the lowest sample collection that we've done, uh, I know the micro piles went down thirty feet below B cell, which is forty feet below grade. Uh, and there were some, uh, just very low levels down there. Uh, in terms of the, uh, the past geo probe efforts, I want to say it was those checked above groundwater. And that significantly dropped off and was near minimal around, I think it was 22 feet. Uh, but yeah, I can get some better numbers on that one.
Yeah, I know for the purposes of the cost estimate for what you'll see in the proposed plan, they use thirty-two feet of, of depth for the excavation.
Thank you. Good point. Yeah, we are being conservative and estimating that we may have to go deep.
Thank you very much.
All right. Now we're rounding back to Mia.
Hi, um, I have a few questions. My, my first question is, do you happen to know off the top of your head, maybe not? Um, how much has been sent, uh, spent to date on three twenty-four building cleanup?
I'd have to, I haven't been part of the, that part of the project for a while, so I'd have to get you an exact number. I know it's definitely over two hundred million.
Okay, that'd be great if, if you could get a more exact number. Um, in terms of the, what will be in the final rod amendment, um, around this conversation of how deep to dig, will you be putting a number on that of EPA's requiring you to dig to thirty-two foot depth? Um, is there going to be a number or is it just kind of as deep as the, you, you find the contamination, then you don't find anymore and so you stop?
So I don't know if you wanted to take that.
I can, sure. Um, it, it won't be the EPA is requiring a specific depth. That's not our intention, at least not at this point in time. Um, we do have cleanup levels that were in the 2013 rod and those are not changing. Um, where this waste site gets strange, I guess we've had a lot of back and forth and discussion about this part is that this is considered principal threat waste and there is no desire to leave high levels at depth. Um, and, and there is a possibility that even if we dug to cleanup levels, which, um, so to clarify, so this is an industrial, um, clean, uh, industrial land use, uh, sorry, I took a minute. Um, and so our industrial land use, uh, cleanup levels for this site said, or for the three hundred area in general, it's what we've been using is that down, uh, you have a specific pico curi per gram for soil cleanup down to fifteen feet below grade. And then it, it stops. But with levels this, at this high, when we do our verification sampling, uh, we would exceed circular protectiveness, although there's not a path. Um, there's not considered a significant groundwater threat here, nor a potential for someone to come into contact with the soils below fifteen feet. And so, um, the desire to go deeper than fifteen feet is an agreement on addressing principal threat waste at this site. And it's not necess, it's, it's unclear, I guess, at this point, if it's necessary from a risk perspective or not due to the lack of a, a potential exposure pathway. Um, but it's a significant amount of material. So what we've talked about is that after you get below the cleanup levels at the, that down to that fifteen feet, which is going to be a wider lateral, um, excavation than that picture that was shown because of, the cleanup levels are very low, low values below one hour equivalent to less than one hour per hour. It's a lower number. I don't know the direct conversion. It gets really confusing. Um, but below that point, they'll, they'll chase the one hour per hour. That's, that's our thinking as an operational guide. So it's not a specific depth and there are probably the majority of under B cell. Once you get down past the, that fifteen footish range, most of it is going to be meeting that. Um, but there, what we do know of that one hotspot that's deeper, so, um, they'll definitely follow towards that. And that way, when we do our verification sampling and they rerun the models, um, that is what we expect will then also have met the circular protectiveness criteria, uh, risk range that we look for. So, um, it, it's confusing. It's a strange one. We've gone back and forth a lot on how you address this. Um, because we don't want to just go, oh, we met cleanup levels of fifteen feet and stop. And so that's not the intent, but it, we're not going to drive a hard num, a hard, you know, number. We want to leave the flexibility up to the operational team and the design.
Okay, thank you. That's, that's really helpful. Ben, did, were you going to say something?
Uh, yeah, I was just going to reiterate, that's part of why we, uh, estimated down to the cost that it would take to go down to thirty-two feet. So, uh, in case, uh, we go deeper or have to chase. Because ultimately you gotta protect groundwater and, uh, potential receptors at the surface.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I have Annie a question for you. You mentioned the, um, trying to find the name of it, the waste management plan. Can you talk about what that is, what the update would be, how that, um, factors into all of this? I'm not familiar with it.
Um, so roughly I can. Um, so there was one developed previously and you can look at that, it's available in the administrative record. Um, that in the past, it was actually a combined waste management plan for the removal action and the remedial action because we were going to put the soils into the other hot cells. So it was all going to be managed as essentially like one, one waste plan, which makes, makes a lot of sense in that case. Um, if we move forward with the decoupled approach, we definitely have to update it. If we, um, but, but regardless, I think it, it speaks to how you package the waste. And I guess assay it really, right? I mean, um, I haven't looked at it in a while, so I don't remember how far it goes into that process, but it does lay out how, uh, the material kind of gets packaged up and how it gets, um, decided where it gets sent, right? So like, like Ben mentioned, there's a slight chance that we do find transuranic waste. Um, in which case it is not going to Erdif. So we have to verify along the way that it's meeting the waste acceptance criteria and that whole process gets laid out in a waste management plan that is part of essentially the remedial, just design remedial action work plan.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Tom, Rebecca, Rose. Is that a new question from you? All right, then we'll have Rob. Go ahead, Tom.
Thanks. Um, I have, I have two questions. Um, hope that's okay. Um, you mentioned that some folks, um, were concerned that this might be high level waste and I can see why, um, because this was either synthetic high level waste used for the German logs or, and you, and they mentioned there were high level tanks. So, um, given that, I was surprised in the draft proposed plan that, and I'm running to help with acronyms here, that the Atomic Energy Act was not listed as an ARAR. An ARAR is of appropriate and applicable and relevant alternative regulations or something like that. Um, so I'm just wondering why the decision was made not to say, yes, this is potentially, um, this is not just low level or mixed level. There's a potential that some people think this could be high level and this is why DOE doesn't believe it's that way. And just go out front with that and say, you know, this is our justification. So it's not perceived as, um, shirking the question. Um, so that's one question.
I'd love to talk to that. My, my legal can put it much more eloquently than I can. So I've, uh, since I can't answer here unfortunately, uh, please do, uh, if you're comfortable with it, making the same, uh, comment during the public comment period because we'll, that'll be responded to.
Okay. And, and EPA, is that an ARAR that was considered?
Yeah. So we don't usually include the Atomic Energy Act as an ARAR. Um, I'm actually not familiar of anywhere that we have. Uh, occasionally we have referenced DOE's, um, manual four thirty-five point one as a to be considered, which, um, is a little different than an ARAR. Um, but from our perspective, so AEA has its own, has its own authorities in it that essentially ride at the same level as CIRCLA. So we don't see any need to call it out really because DOE has to follow it anyways. So, um, so that, that's one, one perspective on that. And the, um, potential for, for the four thirty-five point one. So the predecessor document to that, um, DOE fifty-two eighty, I think it was, was referenced in the Erdif rod. So it's already also a consideration for disposal at Erdif there for how they classify, um, materials that can go to just certain disposal facilities.
Thanks. Um, and then my, my second question was about the groundwater. Um, you mentioned that was it three forty that had a cesium strontium plume associated with the historical operations?
I know it was definitely strontium from there.
Okay. Is that, is that up gradient of three twenty-four?
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Um, because I noticed there's no up gradient monitoring point in the monthly sampling. And if that is still residual from that plume, it would be good to have, you know, that visual of saying, yes, this is still here. It's not new. Um, just something to think about.
Okay. Yeah, I can ask about adding that in.
All right. And then back to Rebecca.
Um, so I have a question about, um, characterization. So when we were doing the horizontal drilling and we found that extra, uh, contamination, high levels outside, which I believe was underneath of the airlock, uh, outside of the footprint of B cell.
Yeah, the pipe trench.
Uh-huh. Um, so I'm wondering if, if EPA, if it was even allowed for them to, or if they did ask for further characterization of that waste site, being that when that was found, work was stopped. And so I'm wondering, um, okay, we found it here. Now where, where else could it be? Like doing, like we did in the past, the geo probes that were put in, you know, to, to monitor for, um, higher levels of radiation that in areas that it's not expected. So that's my first question.
So, um, I was just going to mention, Ben, so I will clarify one thing, work was not stopped when that was found. Um, DOE continued to, to all the other sides of the facility and continued taking readings for about six more months. So that was in August of twenty-three?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two, gosh. Um, and then they continued doing the vertical, um, readings. They, they stopped doing the horizontals, I think at that point, and then moved on to doing a selection of the vertical readings around the rest of the facility. Um, through about March or April, and that's when work was stopped. I don't know if that helps anything, but I did want to mention that because they did continue taking a, a large number of readings after that.
But not hor, not the horizontal, she, like the geo probes that we did in the past is what I'm speaking to.
And I think you're, and Annie's right where she's coming from. And I think you're asking as well, well, why didn't you keep going? Uh, so we did, when we found that hotspot, uh, quite far down, uh, we did some selective, uh, sampling to see, could it have come from the airlock or the pipe trench? Didn't see any levels there, but it was never determined. Well, where did it come from? How does it connect at the three hundred, two ninety-six waste site? Uh, and part of that, uh, because we did check also, as Annie mentioned, around the facility, uh, just to make sure what are the bounds? Since we had a decent understanding of what the bounds of the waste site were, uh, it was that question of what, what does your effort look like to continue characterizing? Uh, because we had that, uh, large excavation with all the temp shoring outside the building. Uh, what would it take to, uh, make that bigger so we can continue to try to get samples? And the decision was, well, we've got enough information to help inform a future design. Uh, that would be more flexible. So instead of continuing to pursue that, uh, especially from a cost, uh, at a risk standpoint, it was, we've got what we need to go evaluate, make a decision. And I'll say in the future, once the building's down, it's a heck of a lot easier to, to try to go, uh, drill, uh, drill and characterize beneath it. Cause as you probably remember, it was very difficult to drive those, uh, the existing, uh, borings below the facility, whether it be obstructions from boulders or something they left behind, uh, during building construction. It was just a very difficult effort because the next stage was, well, can we inject water to try to see if uh, we can get those borings below the waste site and further around it. But we don't want to start adding water if we didn't have to.
Okay. Um, my other question is, um, there's been a lot of building going on around three twenty-four. I'm sure you're aware. You know, PNNL is like, I don't know if they got a windfall or what, but they're building all kinds of, you know, places. They built a new building right in the parking lot of, you know, where three twenty-five is. And if you go down GWA extension, there's a whole bunch of, yeah, construction going on there as well. So that's all in close proximity now, adding more, um, people and buildings and things like that into that area. And I'm wondering if, um, any kind of conversations have been had with PNNL or do they just take part in the, um, the public comment period? Or is there some kind of a relationship with them to talk about, um, how they feel about this?
Yeah, we do have an MOU with the memorandum of understanding and our managers talk. So they're, they're aware of what we're doing. We were aware of them putting in that building. Uh, because they also wanted to take one of our laydown yards, but, uh, yeah, we, we talk, we keep them informed of, hey, this, if you're putting a building there, you can't, it'll impact us. So we've actually, uh, pushed back in some cases, but it's that there is a dialogue going on. So they're aware of what we're doing. We're aware of what they're doing. At those upper levels.
All right. Can I ask one more question?
Sure.
At what point does the ventilation get shut down? Since it is a CAT two nuclear facility, it's a big discussion that, you know, we have on a daily basis there at three twenty-four, like, because they keep saying they're going to fog the ventilation and they're going to shut it down. And so, you know, people's understanding of, well, B cell, you know, those cells are, like you said, they're shielded to a millionaire. So people don't understand, myself included, how you could possibly shut down ventilation to a building. Um, in, in that scenario. So.
So in terms of, can we shut anything down right now? Now we've, we've got a, in our, our collective opinions at least. If you're shutting down the ventilation, you would have had to, uh, stabilize material in the hot cells. You would have had to fog, uh, I say fog, apply fixative to all the ducts because there's contamination inside the ducts that lead to the heat the filters. Uh, and if you do all that, uh, is it irreversible? Not quite, but you're getting pretty close and we don't want to, that's a big decision and talking point of not affecting the coupled approach with the work we're doing. We're trying to keep people employed and a big part of that is, yeah, we can plan all we want. Uh, we don't want to get rid of those planners who are familiar with it. So sure, let's talk about what it would take to go do that. But in terms of executing the work, that's where your big discussion comes in of, if you do that, you could impact the coupled approach. So here's what you would have to do, uh, you know, to recover. So it's, it is a big ongoing discussion. So when you hear stuff, yeah, we, we are planning. Otherwise those people are sitting around and.
Right. We're planning, but we're not doing right this moment.
Go ahead, Annie.
I was just going to say, it will be post-rod amendment. Yeah, because we need an alternative selected before the ventilation can be shut down. Yeah.
And next up we have Rose online.
Thank you. Um, well, some of you sitting there probably know what I'm going to say. Um, but the acumenation, um, does not concur with, uh, the classification of the soils beneath the three twenty-four building. We have written letters from our attorney. We've had exchanges with Department of Justice. We are actively working on this and discussing this and do not, uh, agree with, um, the, 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 even the thought that this material could end up in Erdif. Um, we do believe it to be high level waste and I just really wanted folks in this meeting to, to realize that, you know, somebody out there is speaking against the ideology of, of how this waste is being classified and where it potentially would go, which is staying on the Hanford site in an Erdif cell. So, um, we, it is a, an active discussion, I will say, between, uh, um, us, uh, um, the, uh, technical staff here at our. the uh, technical staff here at our program as well as our attorney with Department of Justice and DOE attorneys. So it's not, in our opinion, this is not a slam dunk at all. And we, this is not, this is yet to be resolved. And if anybody had any questions or anything, we're, I mean, I'm sure we'd be happy to talk to you about it. But just to note that Yakmin Nation does not concur with this at all. I just really wanted folks to understand and know that. Thanks.
All right. Um, we're going to tour the room again. We have Rob Davis, Rob Parmley, Chris, and then Tom. Rob Davis, you're up.
The project is like a civil engineer's dream, you know, it brings back words like angle of repose and how big your pit has to be in it. I did, I was lucky in 2009, I attended a couple of meetings down in INL and I got a tour of their facility there. They didn't really have to tear down structure. You know, they built their tent out in the middle of a burial ground that was existing. So it, it is a little bit different in the scope, but um, the question, when you mentioned fixators, really kind of hit. Many of these fixators are organic by nature. And, and because of our soft soil, our angle of repose is very low. And, and so I would be assuming that you're going to be using not only fixators on the contaminant, but some fixators on the side walls of, of your pit. Does that give any concern in mixing the um, organic materials with the, uh, the waste that we're going to try to dispose at wherever? You know, I, I would think that it would be then a mixed waste or potentially. So um, have you thought that problem through?
I have not been involved in those discussions. I'd be part of our, our waste management group as we're developing, as we determine which fixatives we'd be using. Because right now it's just been unamended water, uh, when we were doing micro pile drilling. Uh, but that a future uh, waste evaluation, when we do generate uh, an updated waste profile for those soils going to Erdif, yeah, that would have to factor into it. But it's, since that's farther down the line, uh, I haven't been involved in that.
Okay, so um, my last question would be, is there a document or somewhere where you discussed some of the down selects to get to these two options?
Yes, we did have a, a previous rather large alternative analysis. I think it was from 2011 back and we were picking out a design, uh, which I remember talking about it last time I was here, but it was quite thorough uh, and what it looked at in terms of, could you, could you try to vitrify that waste in place and move it as a monolith? What about the no action alternative? Uh, so we did, we did rely on, on that previous analysis.
And that's like 2010, 11 timeframe?
If I recall correctly, it was around that timeframe, could be 2011 to 2014. Let me put it that way.
I think it was closer to 2014. It was after the rod.
Okay, and it would be referenced where, where, if I wanted to find it, how deep would I have to go?
Did, did we end up referencing it in the?
I thought we, Jeff, do you remember if we added that?
Thumbs up. Okay, so it is referenced within the FFS, I believe, um, as, as some previous evaluation that had been done.
Thanks.
And those documents would be available in the administrative record when we're referencing them, FFS.
That's good. Good. Thank you.
To Rob Parmley.
Uh, we've been talking a little bit about characterization. Has there been enough uh, sampling of the material down there to, to come up with a uh, a pretty precise characterization of the contamination down there?
So we've got, uh, in terms of the type of samples we've collected, uh, we have two soil samples from below the, uh, the sump below B cell, that low spot for the, in the hot cell where the contamination, the acid ate through the liner and leaked down. Two soil samples were taken from there. So that, those, and that helped us determine what the constituents were. So cesium, strontium, bit of uh, americium, plutonium, and uh, just other very low levels of uh, alpha emitting radionuclides. In terms of have we collected any other soil samples, uh, just due to the difficulty in getting those processed, when we were drilling uh, around uh, B cell, we did uh, collect some. I wouldn't call it a full quality assurance characterization sample, but swipes were taken. Uh, so if we're doing work, we got to make sure the workers are safe. And part of that is you check, uh, you know, check some dose rates, but also take some swipes. And those were analyzed. We did want to capitalize on uh, taking advantage of figuring out what were the constituents, what were the ratios uh, of typically cesium, the strontium? Because normally it was cesium bound up first and strontium was lower down. Does that assumption still hold true? Uh, and that was one of the unique parts uh, that we discovered. We found the hotspot. Uh, it was cesium was a bit higher than expected in terms of that ratio. So it's, do the, do the soil samples give us a lot of additional data? Not so much. It's the dose rates that help tell us, here's where your, your hotspots are and here where it's lower. Uh, since we've got a pretty good idea of, uh, we know exactly what went into that hot cell, what experiments were done and what constituents are in the soil. So we did opportunity, opportunistically take some samples, but our two main samples that we rely on are the cesium, sorry, the two samples directly below the sump, uh, since that's right near your opening.
And Chris.
This is actually a follow on to uh, to Rob's question. When you do your verification sampling, will you have to analyze for other contaminants? Metals or organics to ensure that they don't exceed cleanup levels? In other words, are there other known contaminants that you're also going to have to analyze for to, to verify that, that, that you're below cleanup levels for soils?
Also check with our waste management group, uh, on that one.
We have the, the rod, the table of cleanup levels and the rod is extensive and we'll have to verify against all of them. I mean, it's like, you know, a full page of contaminants listed with cleanup levels. So we will have to verify against those.
Yeah, because other contaminants could well have a larger footprint than cesium or strontium.
And back to Tom.
Sorry to ask another one, but um, you mentioned uh, boulders stopping geo probes and it gave me nightmare flashbacks of trying to do excavations to remove non-radionuclide contamination um, in boulder fields and breaking excavators um, on giant boulders. And I'm wondering how that factors into your waste disposal strategy? When you could have boulders the size of Volkswagen's um, that are extremely contaminated? And how do you break that up and put it into a small container? Is that all being considered? Um, or is, yeah?
Yep, that's something, as you mentioned, the boulder, the size of a Volkswagen, we found that on the river corridor uh, before. So it's, in that case, would you need a bigger waste package potentially? Or could you break it up in place? Uh, because even with, within the hot cell, we did have that special uh, implement to, to break holes in the concrete floor. Uh, but it, it comes down to that question of if we find something that will not fit into the existing waste package, evaluate what's the, the lowest risk and the best way to do it? Bigger waste package or uh, break it up?
All right, so that's the end of the queue. Are there any new questions in the room? Are there any other questions online?
I have another question, if that's okay.
Go ahead.
Hi, this is Simone. Um, so back to weight soil classification. So will DOE have any attorneys present at the public meeting? Who can kind of speak to the soil classification um, as high level waste or not high level waste? I just anticipate that the public will have a lot of questions about that. So it might be really helpful to have someone who can kind of talk about that a little more in depth. That might have been just a comment, not really a question.
Yeah, thank you for the comment. I can, uh, we haven't established that, but I can definitely relay that as a request and a suggestion to them.
Thank you. And then one last question that goes back to um, something Rebecca brought up earlier. So are there any proposals to develop in the 300 area that aren't from PNNL? So it'd be outside of that MOU. And then if so, or if that did happen, what role or does DOE kind of play in, in development in that area, I guess?
That I would need to, I'm not familiar with, uh, or I don't get included in discussions of those other efforts. I know once DOE does retain that responsibility for ensuring that, you know, those remediated circle of sites are maintained, especially if they have institutional controls over them. But yeah, I'm not familiar or looped in on those discussions for if there's other land transfers or building going on.
Okay, thank you.
And another question from Rebecca.
So I just remembered I was asked to ask this question. I know that you guys publish when you have your public uh, meetings. It's published in the newspaper or, you know, put out on listservs and things like that. I was asked, how do the people, so if you're at the 300 area and you're looking across the river, you know, there's all kinds of houses across the river over there. I was asked how those people get notified or how, um, you know, if there's a special kind of something that you guys do for just, you know, those specific people across the river there? Or I said, you know, they publish in the newspaper. I'm sure they have, you know, the listservs and things like that. And, but that's about all I know. I said, that's, you know, their responsibility to do that. But I'm just wondering, how do you guys um, notify people that who, you know, are in that close proximity?
I know we don't go door to door over there. Uh, I'm familiar with, as you mentioned, we, we've got our listserv. We've got our 30 day pre-notice that will go out. We are required to have our, our newspaper ad that goes out. But it's that, that as I understand it, uh, usually gets the word out pretty well. But I'm not familiar with door to door efforts. Yep, thank you.
Uh, Dana online commented that there will be social media efforts too.
Yes, thank you, Dana.
And Tamiya.
Ben, your answer to that question um, just raised something for me. So today is May 8th, tomorrow is May 9th. That's the 30 days from the start of the public comment period. Are we expecting to see that notice go out tomorrow? I mean, how firm are those dates that you've, um, you've told us about?
Oh, they're, they're firm. So the, that list serve notice, because as I mentioned, we just got that approval uh, yesterday. Uh, so that's been generated for weeks. We're ready to get it sent out. So July, June 9th through July 9th, uh, Anna, thank you for your help. I was already scheduled the meeting on the 30th. So it's, we're, we're looking forward to it. We don't want to delay unless something unknown comes up, but we're, we're ready for it.
Okay, great. And in terms of the public meeting, do you know if it will be hybrid or virtual only?
Am I allowed to say Dana? Okay, it's hybrid.
Any final questions?
Forgive me for, I'm kind of new here, but um, is it possible to streamline your public meetings with this one, for instance? For your city councilman and um, groups, what, I mean, what kind of groups show up to your public meetings?
Whoever wants to come, uh, we welcome everyone uh, coming, but are.
I guess my point is, instead of you guys bouncing around to all these different places, why couldn't you do it like right here in this forum, we have uh, your subject matter experts? You know, and I mean, kind of it's still a competence, maybe? I just thought, is it possible?
Trying to think of a good way to respond. So it's, we welcome everyone coming, all the subject matter experts coming. This one in specific, uh, we like, try to give you guys a heads up before the proposed plan goes out, the pre-notice, because we know, uh, especially some with larger stakeholder groups are going to get questions of what's going on, what's happening? We, we saw this pre-notice, can you tell me more about it? What is, what is decoupled approach? What is coupled approach? So it's just out of a courtesy and to maintain that relationship. That's why this was a, a very specific meeting that we had just with you guys. We have, I'd love to have, actually I enjoy the meetings, but I'm sure uh, the people that have to organize them would love to have less. But it, I do, uh, I do welcome any and all comments at any of the meetings.
Okay, thanks.
Thank Bob Quirk, may I have a question? Uh, step up to the public comment microphone.
This is Bob Quirk. Um, I was working on site back in 20, in 2010, I think, when they first had the geo probes underneath 324 and I was briefed on these spikes that they found. So you had these spikes, they were very clear spikes, and now you're finding areas beyond those spikes where there's contamination. Are you sure that the material is not migrating? And it really is uh, pretty solid where it is, pretty stable?
Great question. So this was an area that we were able to reach that they couldn't reach with the geo probes. And they had a pretty good understanding back then in 2011 through 14 of the areas they could reach. But that one question uh, area that we were able to get to, because we, with the geo probes, you had to build a pit next to the building so you could shove a drill horizontally. We built an even bigger pit this time around in order to, a deeper and bigger one, in order to install those structural modifications. And that's what allowed us to come in at uh, more horizontal, less of an angle. So we got into a new area uh, that I'd say, I think it was the southeast corner that we couldn't get to before. And that was also part of, okay, with, with this larger tech or better technology that we have, let's go check around uh, around the hot cells farther out that we had checked previously. Uh, and we weren't finding anything above that one hour per hour threshold uh, that I was talking about. So it's in terms of mobility, uh, when we did install those geo probes over 10 years ago, uh, we left them in place and it was routinely checked, is there any movement? Are we noticing any change? Uh, and they were, there was no change detected at that time and groundwater monitoring was ongoing. So in terms of have things been moving, uh, no, we don't think so. Because as we were doing the, the structural modification drilling, we had to make sure uh, to detect if we were causing any anthropogenic impacts. So.
Okay, thank you.
Good question.
All right, uh, any last call for final questions? Looks like, looks like that's it. Well, thank you, Ben and Anna for the presentation and the, and your patience with all our questions.
I love it.
I think with that, we're ready for a break. We'd all like to return at 11:05.
And real quick, if I could, uh, so thank you guys for the feedback. I do appreciate it, uh, take it into consideration. Uh, one of the major things I heard is there were definitely questions on, what is your schedule? What do your costs look like? Uh, and as, since we're pretty close to having that document finalized, uh, we will discuss and likely if we can get headquarters approval, incorporate what we can from the comments I heard today. Can we get a schedule on here? So we can easily compare those two. So that was a major one I heard. I know there were also a lot of questions on high level waste, so I'll definitely let our legal know, hey, you guys want to come over to the next meeting? All right. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Love the questions.
Thank you. And with that, we'll be on break till 11:05. All right, so I think we're all back and ready to go. Um, this section, under which Rob is gonna, gonna lead us off on, it's just a chance to, to share our thoughts on what we heard.
I was gonna say these brownies are great. Who made these? Oh, they're wonderful. That, I had to interrupt the meeting.
That's a great iceberg.
Tell her thanks.
So we're gonna just kind of open it up to everyone to share their thoughts. You know, what did you think of the alternatives? Do you like one over the other? Do you like? You know, what did you think of the alternatives? Do you like one over the other? Do you like either of them? And, you know, think about, you know, if if you or the HAB were to provide public comment when that opens, you know, how would you direct that? Anything else to add to that, Tom?
One thing we would need to do first is to request an extension. Our, if we do advise, we have, we have an IM team working on this already. We haven't, we met once, so we've at least met. And then we have an agenda slot for the June CARM meeting to approve it out of committee. So we have to do it before then. And then that would go to the August board meeting. The August board meeting is, I think, 45 days after the comment period starts. So we would, we would need to require, I don't know, we need to request an additional 45 days from the comment period if we wanted to make the window. But yeah, other than that, we we have the one topic that we've already come up with from the IM team looking at is maybe using, if if this covered excavation strategy works, then using it as sort of a best practice for future complicated excavations on the site to prevent contamination spread. But that's where we started and looking forward to getting input to see where we go from here.
All right, so who'd like to lead off with their thoughts on today's presentation? Start with Pam, then go to Rob.
It was interesting that Idaho was mentioned because I was there and saw the the operation when they were digging up pit nine or whatever it was and how they proceeded with it. And it was done safely. Material was removed. I, this has been a long time coming, really a long time. I was just sharing with Jane from Health that there was a water leak not far from the building years ago from a water line that wasn't anticipated there. And Shelley Simone and I went out with Peter Bankston and walked the area. And I mean, it's, in some ways, it's a long ways from anything, but then again, it's close to Richland. And I'm stunned that DOE has let PNNL build buildings in this vicinity. I'm flabbergasted. Why? But anyway, sooner rather than later, so I I think the decoupled approach makes sense. And so that would be my suggestion. And we do need to be able to provide comments. So what whatever mechanism we need to request, maybe be allowed an exception to have late advice coming in. It's important. And I'm, I'm going to be sending a note to the city manager of Richland with this packet of information and say, you need to meet with the Department of Energy and potentially EPA and Ecology and and understand, because your citizens are going to start asking questions. And so that's where I'm coming from. Thanks.
And Tom.
The the Idaho thing reminded me, we had an action item from the last 324 conversation requesting an SME from Idaho to talk about their lessons learned from this in like tent excavation. Since we haven't, I'm not aware of it being done on the site in the past decades. But that might be another question is what waste sites at Hanford have had this type of strategy? As far as the preferred alternative, I think personally, I agree that the the decoupled seems more logical. I am concerned about anytime you excavate, you're going to mobilize contamination or potentially mobilize contamination. So one thought I had is, you know, if if they could install a down gradient well that could be multi-purpose as an extraction well in case there's a groundwater plume created during the excavation, they could capture it before it hits the river. I don't know if that's too weedy to be an advice, but that's where I would go. Yeah.
Tom, do you still want us to look into having an SME from Idaho or?
For EPA?
Or EPA?
Yeah, because EPA, I'm, well, sadly, we can't talk to Dennis Falk, but EPA was very involved with with pit nine at Idaho. And if there was somebody that's still there that hasn't retired yet, it would be a good source of information.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't think that it'll be germane to this advice, but I think if this is the path forward, it would be good to just get an informational brief if Idaho is willing to virtual in and say, yeah, we like, we love this strategy.
Okay, yeah, we'll look into it.
So in the room, we have Chris for thoughts, and then Rob. Go ahead, Chris.
I like the decoupled approach. It's cheaper and it's faster, and I think we need more of that in a site. The comment I had, and this is kind of relates to just the comment that that Ann made. If you start finding more contamination beyond the the footprint that they showed in the slide, and you have, say, a slope of two to one in your excavation, or two and a half to one, you are going to be digging a pretty damn big hole there. Pretty large hole, no question. But presumably that'll be addressed or has been addressed in the RDR, RDRA work plan that will have to be made.
RDRA work plan is remedial design, remedial action, right?
So we have Rob.
Yeah, the decoupled approach, I think, is the wisest choice. But again, a fundamental rule of cleanup is don't try to clean something up unless you got a place to put it. And without 100% guarantees, we're going to be put at Nerdif. You know, we need to say full stop or have an alternative or something of that sort. So if I was going to write or wanted to help support some advice, my advice would be get this decision done now. Get get where you're going to put it first. Yeah, you can do the prep and start building and building out and that sort of thing. But before they touch that waste, they need to know where it's going to go. And if it's going to be a legal fight between DOE and the tribes or some other organization and, you know, just that, a judge could say halt everything and then we're stuck. So let's follow the rules of cleanup is have a place to put it before you do the work. Thanks.
So so, Rob, on that line, would it make sense to have an advice point that says something along the lines of have a contingency plan if it can't go to Erdef, whether that's an interim safe storage facility that's regulated by, I guess, Ecology, right, adding it into REV 9? Because that's awesome, or something along those lines.
Yeah, and and if our advice would go to the proper people in the House of Representatives in the Senate, you know, they could really hurry along this national effort to have a final high level waste disposal, geologic disposal location. You know, these discussions are going on right now. They've got to do it sooner or later. All of our dry storage pads are filling up from the commercial nuclear fleet. It's it's a desperate need and the Gen four reactors or whatever they're calling them now. They're a whole, another unique problem with the molten salt fuel. Because I don't know how they consider that not reprocessing to extract that. So anyway, I I do think our advice ought to ought to say something to the effect that if it's got to be level, high level waste, then we got to have a place to put it. And 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 just storage on top of the ground is probably the least least best answer. How's that? But but again, we got to find a place to put this where everybody agrees and we get on with it.
Okay, so a lot of people on cue, we're going to start with Chris, go to Susan, Pam, Dan, so it's Brian, Ivy, Richard Bloom. Bye, Chris.
Does anybody here know, Tom or Ann? Did they encounter high level waste in the remediation of 68, 61810? And if so, did that go to Erdef? Does anybody happen to know that? Because if it did, that'd be a precedent.
Nothing they called high level waste went to Erdef, because nothing, no high level waste can go to Erdef. I think there was some true, right?
Yeah, so there is this on? Okay, um, so there was true waste, and I think that there may have been either some concern, at least, that there was going to be high level waste. Because I think there was, there's a document and I don't recall what it is. I think it's a SAP, basically, a sampling and analysis plan that talked about how they would differentiate and delineate anything that was. But I don't know that they actually encountered any, but there is a document out there that speaks to that process of characterizing the waste as they were drilling and what they found. I don't know if that helps, but.
So next up, we have Susan.
Rob, I agree with you that we need a geologic, high level waste geological repository. And I've been on that soapbox for the last couple of years. But I also don't agree with, I don't agree with no action. We need to clean up this facility and taking no action under the, well, we'll, you know, we need a geologic repository is not an acceptable solution. Because, yeah, I'd love to see one, but I'm not going to hold my breath. So but we need to clean up that 324 area today. The sooner the better, for the safety of the workers and the safety of the citizens of the Pacific Northwest.
All right. And Pam.
Thanks to the state of Oregon, we have high level waste in Erdef. It's in a reactor core. And they made exceptions and Oregon thought it was just fine for that reactor core to be buried in Hanford. It is, there's a lot of concrete around it and the high level waste is in in the guts of it, but it's there. So in my National Liaison Report, defensive, huh? It is a priority of this administration to get on with building a national repository for high level waste. And and everyone says it must be the choice of the community. It must be absolutely okay with them. And so across the country, anybody that wants to volunteer some space, let's talk. But I'm not aware of anybody that stepped up to that opportunity. Thanks.
Do you need to make a clarification?
Yeah, so so for the record, the Trojan reactor from the facility in Washington County, Oregon, came to Hanford and is in Erdef. However, it was not reprocessed spent nuclear fuel and it was not spent nuclear fuel. So it is high activity waste semantically, and it is, it is spicy, but it is not a high level waste.
All right, and the next up, next up, we have Dan, so let's.
Best day in the session, really enjoyed all of the details. I'm hoping that they, the lessons learned demonstrated when they first did the, I believe it was the Tonyan finishing plant. They they deconstructed the building and left it piled on the ground and they sprayed fixative over it. And they got a lot of huge radio nuclei. The next building, I believe, was a pure ex plant. Where as they dis- deconstructed the building, they learned that on track, shipped it out. And hopefully we can recommend the same thing for this project. So we're not, not that's the piles of XD, piles of deconstructed building and dirt with fixing port over it. I think it's worth mentioning and also depending on making that change. It was, I remember the video of the Tonya finishing plant where they were just truck after truck, instead of being dumped on the ground, he's dumping the trucks in the way they went. Thank you.
So I, you broke up a little bit, so if I can say what I think I heard, and that's to use lessons learned during during the demolition of EFP for the demolition of 324 in the decoupled pathway. Is that what I heard?
Yeah, yes, that's what I wanted to say. Thank you for saying.
Okay, thank you. Next up, we have Brian.
As a former worker, a public citizen, a board member and a taxpayer, I think the decoupled process sounds the best. I'm totally with Susan, and I think this needs to be a high priority. However, we may need to consider some temporary waste pads to lawsuit possibly gets settled or an argument or whatever we want to call it at this point. So I'm with Tom on that. Hopefully, we can set up something temporary until that all gets fixed. Thank you.
All right, and next up, Richard Bloom online.
Yes, I'd like to dispel a couple of points. I'm not going to chime in on the alternatives, but more or less. Excavation's intense. Wait a second. I don't know if I can. Okay, can you hear me now?
We can hear you.
Well, it's very low. I'm getting a lot of feedback. Anyway, Rocky Flats did an excavation in tents. And because of the airborne to workers, it, they had to open the flats. So the tent concept is mostly for show, or at least it was there. The other question goes down to is, it may, it may be greater than class C waste, but the waste should not be high level waste from the standpoint, it should go through a waste evaluation. You know, we're processed to to before before they start digging. If this isn't incidental to processing, what is? So that that's relative, you know, a straightforward approach. It may end up being class C waste, which means it would have to ship off to Texas. But I have full faith and confidence that you can always dilute it in the process of digging it to get it below class C levels, unlike the reactor compartment where you couldn't break it up. So, you know, I I don't think the high level waste issue is unresolvable. It just needs to have a wear process. And I'm not certain it is appropriate for the HAB to ask for an extension of the public comment and delay the process. I think it's appropriate to have the discussions in the HAB and let individuals put in their public comment and not do it as a HAB comment. Let's, let's get on with the process. Thank you.
So for my notes to clarify, are you, are you saying that we should recommend to DOE that they do a preemptive we're on the material? Because I I agree, it would pass a we're most likely.
Absolutely.
Okay.
You can get out, correct?
Yeah, yeah. And then second question, and even though we all would do our individual comments during the comment period, we would still put in advice just outside the comment period. Is that second part right?
Well, if you want. Well, if you want to, I mean, I, it, to me, advice is so tough to get consensus on. I think that's, I don't know if it, other than adding them on the back. That's about all.
All right. Next up we have Rebecca.
So I am going to say something that's probably controversial because I know most of you like this decoupled approach. And I will say, as a worker, I am more in favor of the coupled approach. Because I believe we have a lot of the equipment already. We have a lot of the remote manipulator arms in place. We have a lot of the items that we can use to go down without workers being exposed to high levels of radiation to get some of that waste that's already in the, in the B cell under the B cell with the building still standing. There's a lot of creature comforts that are involved with, you know, when you tear down a building, you've got all these workers housed in trailers. And you got porta potties and you got, not that the building has any water or any fire safety system anymore. But from a worker standpoint, I believe that, you know, we have a lot of this equipment that's there. And I think that some of that waste can be safely gotten without workers being exposed. Also, I agree with, with Richard. I've been part of a lot of demolitions, you know, that were under a tent or even sluicing C one oh six, which was a high, you know, it was a boiling waste tank. And we had a, a tent over that. Well, guess what? We got to cut a hole in the top of it because it, it was boiling so much, you take the riser, the top of the riser off. It was just like a, you know, you were in a steam bath. So they had to cut the, the top off of that tent. So, you know, there's other things involved with this building as well that, you know, there's lead cadmium, chromium, beryllium. There's all of those things that also have to be taken care of. A lot of the asbestos, we've been able to remove. You know, the low hanging fruit. So, um, you know, I'm not, I'm not opposed to the decoupled approach, but I feel as a worker and from radiological standpoint. And the, the dos rates that, that are very, very high dose rates. That's what I worry about. You know, the workforce and how, you know, the shielding and let's use the equipment that we have. Yes, we have some equipment that is breaking down. We do have a couple of the cranes inside that need to be fixed. But they did order stuff, some of the stuff they can't get parts for. So I understand that, you know, logic also. But I feel like we should do what we can do using the equipment that we have right now before we start knocking down that building. My other fear is that we start knocking down that building, we find something else. Then what? Now we've got a, you know, now we've got a bigger problem. And so that's just my opinion. Again, like I said, as a worker there and it sure is, it, it sure would be nice to be able to do that work and still have somewhat of a, a building, you know, around you and a controlled area where you can safely get things in and out of that building. Rather than doing that outside in the heat of the summer and, you know, in the dead cold of the winter. So there's things to think about heat stress and cold stress for the workers also. All I got.
All right. So we have Mia and then Rob.
My question is actually for Annie and then unfortunately Ben's not here. I don't think. But maybe taking it back to DOE, um, you know, if we did, if we did ask for an extension, but it wasn't through the August board meeting, or if we didn't ask for an extension at all, since it is so close to the end of that comment period, if, you know, if the comments, the advice that comes from the HAB, which I hope we can come to agreement and write advice on this. If that would be considered in, before making final decisions on the rod amendment and things like that.
Yeah. Um, is this on again? No? Yes. Someone give me thumbs up. I might as well, but anyways, um. Okay. So I, I would say yes, we, it would not be included in the responsiveness summary. But, but timing wise, we'll be going through drafts and reviews throughout from fall, you know, into the next year. So there's time for us to consider, of course, additional advice.
All right. We have another question from Rob Davis or Todd.
Yeah, I support generating some advice that would look at the uncoupled approach as a strong runner. But I think that we also put caveats in the advice that because it's going to be two, three years before they can actually start messing with the radioactive stuff in the uncoupled. That in that period of time, they need to resolve the issue with the tribes on where that waste is going and that there should be a, a stop. If, you know, a, a full stop before we start digging that, that messing around with the high radioactive material. But I, I'm really worried that it's going to end up being a, a pressure point between some special interests and the Department of Energy and, and EPA and et cetera. So like I said, I would support having advice that gives the preferred option as a, or a cup, uncoupled. Thank you.
So it sounds like there's A, a desire to do advice. And we've got, uh, I seem to hear a lot of people saying we have a, a bias for action. But also a definition of where it's going in case it doesn't fit Erdif SWAC Wastes After Treaty. So what do you think about advice that doesn't take a side on either of the act of the options? But says these are other things you should be thinking about. And then we can all individually say, I like B or I like A, but that way we're not, you know, coming out against worker safety, which obviously we don't want to do that. And we're still adding what we have consensus on. Yeah. Look at me not getting in the weeds.
What I said for those sitting here, keep it high level. So we're not getting into the weeds. Which is basically giving a high level response to the agencies of, these are our, are our priorities. Do the work, do the work, do it safely. Make sure you have a backup plan for the waste if it doesn't fit Erdif criteria.
I, I think another point of discussion is that some of these temporary buildings are actually full structures with, they're not tents, so to speak. They're thick polyethylene and I know our air force uses them for hangers and they last 20 years. They got air conditioning in them. You can put tower, tower crane systems in them. So, um, so I don't, I, I would expect DOE to have a top notch structure built. Not some flimsy camping tent. So I think that, um, and, and with particular attention to worker comforts and safety and, and to handle those, those kinds of things. Several hundred feet with barriers in them, shield walls, decontamination areas. It's like a full little building, you know? Yeah. I'm not, I'm very sympathetic though to the worker comfort, you know, dawning and the whole thing. Yeah. Anyway, thanks.
All right. Have a path forward and a com- or near path forward and a comment from Rose.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I, I'm not sure what type of advice, we may end up abstaining. I think is what I should say from those conversations are. We, we are at a level where our attorney is involved in this issue. And so I will probably, just so that the board, everybody knows that we definitely want it cleaned up. We absolutely want it off the river. Nobody wants it more than Yakima Nation. Yeah, not, but we are, have concerns about the classification of the waste and where the waste will go. And because we're actively having discussions with our attorney and Department of Justice on this issue, on this classification issue. We would likely not participate too heavily on, on, on this particular advice. We've already taken it out, you know, we have a path that we will take as Yakima Nation. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that with, but we're not, we're not going to hold up. Obviously your advice would likely just kind of abstain from, from that. I will have to, I will have to talk to our attorney on, you know, where our line in the sand would kind of be with, whether or not level we would be able to participate in what topic we should take within this group. Just want to throw it out there.
Thank you. Next up we have Chris.
I personally am not very knowledgeable about waste management. That's something I've never been involved with really, except extremely peripherally in my cleanup career at, at DOE sites. And I expect that might be true for a lot of HAB members. Not very knowledgeable about definitions of high level waste, low level waste, so on and so forth. And maybe this would be a good topic for an information presentation by DOE. As a waste one O one, not getting into three twenty-four, not getting into issues that could interfere with possible litigation with the Yakima on DOE, but just generally waste management one O one. I don't think in the five years I've been on the HAB that we've had anything quite like that. We've had a presentation on differences between RICRA and CIRCLA. But I don't think we've had anything in the last five years on waste management one O one. And that might be something that would be beneficial to all of us going forward in order to better understand issues like have been, have, have arisen here and how we might address or not address them. That's just my thought after listening to all this conversation.
So I've got some homework to do. First of all, is there anyone who wants to join the IM team who's not on the IM team? After that, we'll have to schedule a follow-up meeting. I'll work up a draft with what the notes I have from today and from last time are. And we'll, we'll schedule a time for that and then bring it to the CARM if it passes out of the IM team. That's the, the process. Yeah. Rose, if you're, if you're willing and able to join that conversation. Obviously we, we don't want to put you in a conflict of interest or illegal problem, but we would like to try to find something we can all agree on. And I appreciate you being forward and upfront on that.
Go ahead, Rose.
Yeah, I, I posted in the chat here. Yeah, put me on there. I make sure that I know about it. I don't know when the, what the call is. I have a really, really, really tight schedule these days, but I will reach out to our attorney and I will share with him this conversation and what, but what HAB is looking at and that you guys are seeking to, to be able to put in advice. And I will find out what my boundaries are. And, and I'm just for folks, I just, I've really got a, is there a reason why I've got such a terrible echo?
That's usually due to somebody's microphone in the room being on.
Oh, can we fix that? Maybe? Cause that's really distracting for me. I'm losing my train of thought because I keep coming back at myself here. Anyway, I just, just for folks to understand this, the three hundred area is, is Yakima Nation put in a, in a notice of intent to sue on that final record of decision, when the record of decision was issued. So there's been a lot going on in the three hundred area for us. And there were several points that we had listed in our notice of intent to sue. Many of which have been resolved, but I just, I really felt like it was important for people to know that we've had a lot of issues in, uh, thank you, Matt, for fixing that. We've had a lot of issues with the three hundred area and we have some grave concerns about what has happened there, what the, what the final plans were and, and alternatives and such. And we've really had to work through each one of those issues. And yet now here is another issue that was not addressed in the rod originally. Additional information was found out later, obviously the nature of, of the additional contamination and whatnot. And so I just, I, I just, I guess I just want folks to understand that we've had, you know, like this, you know, 10 plus year history of things in the three hundred area that we have been trying to address. We are not trying to hold things up or anything like that, but we also don't want to move forward with something that we believe is not in the best interest of Yakima Nation. Not in the best interest of the state of Washington, not in the best interest in as far as the type of contaminants that are going into Erdif and, and will be remaining on site and classifications and that type of thing. And we really need to be able to work through these issues in order, you know, to be able to, to move forward. And, and we have been working directly with EPA, with ecology and with DOE and whatnot. So anyway, I just, I really wanted to just make that known to people that it's not just this issue. We've had other issues with the three hundred area record of decision. And, and we're, we're trying to work through some of that stuff, but I, if you will, please do put me on that meeting. I will talk to our attorney prior to, hopefully I would be able to maybe share more with folks. I don't know. I, I need to, I'm not, actually, I'm not really sure exactly where we are at this precise moment, but I will find out.
Thank you, Rose. So I'm going to take a couple of weeks to see what congeals out of this, these notes I have. And then I'll work with Josh to schedule a doodle poll for the IM team to meet. And I'll, I'll get through the draft as soon as I can figure out how to stay high level in this because I do like going into the weeds. So, so I had Rob Davis, you joined the team, I think. And Pam and people online. Excellent. The more the merrier.
Tom, and the IM team is specific to one of these proposals, alternate, alternatives in the rod, right?
The IM team is specific to the focused feasibility study and proposed plan, not necessarily to coming on one of the sides of the two proposals. Who's on the team?
Okay. So you have to, if you don't hear your name and you want to be on it, you'll have to let me know. From people who I've heard sign up today and who are already on the IM team, it's led by Tom Sillia and joined by Al Faraby, who will be the future Benton County representative, and Brian Ivey, Charles LaCrusty, Chris Sutton, Dan Solitz, Jim DeHurdi, Kevin Danby, Mia Burke, Pam Larson, Rebecca Holland, Rob Davis, Rose Ferry, Simone Anter and Susan Coleman.
It's an IM team of the whole. The, the good news is if it, if it passes out of the IM team, the whole board's approved it. So.
Pretty close. So something to check on before we move too far down the line. Has there anyone who had any thoughts or concerns that needed to be included in this that we haven't covered yet? It sounds like we covered everything. So for scheduling, if I recall, I think the distribution deadline for the June agendas where we would have a chance to review potential advice is May twentieth. So we'll, I want to schedule it ahead of that. That doesn't give a whole lot of turnaround time for advice. So y'all have to let me know. It works for you, Tom. I want to schedule it ahead of that. That doesn't give a whole lot of turnaround time for advice. So y'all have to let me know. It works for you, Tom.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's try to find something in the high teens in May. And I'll, I'll, I'll put a rush on.
So we've conveyed our thoughts. We have what sounds like a path forward. Is there anything else we need to cover?
Megan offered to be available for any ques- questions that you guys may have of her for the last few minutes. So feel free.
Go ahead, Rebecca.
I don't know.
Brownie.
Brownie. Oh, brownies. I don't know. Um, Megan, this is kind of off topic, but I'm wondering about, just for my own planning purposes, I'm wondering about the leadership workshop. Can you fill us in the details with that?
What would you like to know?
Well, I'd like to know, uh, where it's going to be, uh, what time it's going to be.
Okay.
And if it's going to be virtual or hybrid.
Um, yeah. So, um, that one is not approved for, um, travel. So if people all would agree to travel on their own dime, and I hate even saying that out loud, but I'm just being honest with you. Um, leadership workshops were not approved at the headquarters level. Um, I believe HAB is the only SSAB that has one, which is part of the issue because they're being blanket across everything. Um, so I believe it was on the calendar for June. Um, I'm going to be meeting with Sue and Mia after the meeting today and just let them know where we're at with things and maybe even possibly talk calendar a little bit. Um, if we want to try and get creative, um, and maybe mix it with something else, we can do that. Um, but I'm assuming it's going to be virtual at this point. Unless people want to travel on their own. Hybrid, sorry. Yeah.
That mean, so we can, Josh, do your, sorry, Josh, do you already have a room?
Oh, yes. The, the date would be June 5th and we have a room held at WSU. I won't guess the room number. I think it goes 219, but I don't remember well enough.
Okay. So we've got the, the technology, the room, no cost. So the only question would be those that have to travel. They would either have to do it at their own cost. I hate saying that too, um, or be virtual. Their choice.
Correct.
They, but the, but the meeting would be available to them. So in interest of equity, everybody has the opportunity to attend, not necessarily in the, that's not necessarily the preferred state. Um, but under these changing times, we do what we have to do.
Yeah. And I'm going to add it to my super long page of notes for Kelly, just to make sure we don't have any issues with that. But, um, I will let her know that that is our preference. Does that answer your question, Rebecca? Okay. While you're talking, um, we have approval for four people from HAB to attend the EOC drill that's coming up. Um, I would give that to you and your subcommittee first, if you have four people that would like to attend. And then if you have not enough butts in seats, then we can extend it past that.
Yeah. So, um, I know Richard, um, he declined, um, to go. So we do, I myself will be attending. Um, and
When is the drill? Date?
Yep. June 26th, correct? Yeah. And so I asked, I believe that I asked Josh maybe to put it out. We do have a meeting coming up in June. We can ask then at that time, or, um, you could put it out in the, you know, events at a glance or whatever. Anybody who's on the Lids committee first is who I would offer it to. And then if we don't have any takers, then, um, you know, interested parties, I don't know, go by seniority. I don't know how you do that, but.
I'm going to let you make that decision.
You don't know the seniority list here on the HAB, but.
Yeah. Whoever your four are, just let us know. We need some time just to get names to them so they can create badging and stuff. So.
What is, what is the exercise? What's the focus?
It is the, it's the site wide drill and I'm not exactly sure what it's going to be.
I don't know that they've announced that yet, but I think that's part of it is that they just.
They don't want to spoil the fun.
Yeah. You don't know until the day of.
Yeah.
It's just like any other.
Probably a plane crash into a, you know, tank farm.
It's an all day affair, right?
I'd be interested if.
It's not all day. I think it's like a chunk, like usually in the morning. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. So Pam, you would be interested?
Yep. If, if I'm in town.
Okay.
I would be interested. I've participated in statewide drills, Michigan during, uh, Burmese to construction.
Okay. So Josh, can you take down those names or?
All right. So yeah, I had that marked as a board bit, or sorry, Lids business item, but it sounds like we need to act earlier. So I hear Pam, Rob Parmley as potential participants.
Yeah. And we will, like I said, I'll bring it up at the, at the Lids meeting. And say, I mean, we just have people, interested parties at this point. So.
Uh, since you need to get names as the Lids meeting on June 3rd too late? Okay.
Um, so why don't we leave it on the agenda if it's not already for Lids? And then we'll just give that action to you guys that you just need to let us know what for.
Okay.
And we won't interfere past that.
All right.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. And checking again. So it sounds like we covered our committee, the whole goals. We've covered some other board and subcommittee goals. Is there anything else we need to ever before? Nope. Go ahead.
Any last comments from anyone?
Me. Okay. So I have questions for you guys as part of our tracker. So we have, I just need to know if you guys are still interested. So EOC drill we covered. The potential visit from, I'm going, I apologize and mess up. Is it Pocan and Six Killer? Um, that came up in emails before my time that we're looking through. Are you guys still interested in them attending?
Yes. And that was the regional director for EPA.
Yep.
And the, um, director of Washington State Department of Ecology. And I think we were talking that they said yesterday, August meeting.
Yeah. And that's the last I heard was that it's on their calendars and we're holding them to, to come and do a, a visit to tri cities for both the director of ecology and the EPA RA. Um, we can confirm that, but that's, that's the last I heard was that, that was our goal is to get them out here for the August meeting.
If it's not too much of a pain, I just had an idea that rather than August, if we looked at October, then we could also have them participate on then HAB tour. If we have one of those for new members, um, and then the new members would also get that briefing as well. Just throwing the thought out there.
I can take it back, but I think they're also going to be planning their own tour in August. Um, I'll follow up. I'll follow up with you.
Yeah, that was, that based on my experience, that way they're going to have, they're going to come out here and they're going to have packed days. So we're not going to be able to get them for long, but more of a meet and greet introduction. Maybe at the beginning of our meeting or right after lunch or something like that. We did this with Casey Sixkiller a couple of years ago. Um, and it just, it was so, it was just a manageable piece of their bigger schedule. Um, Casey's at least familiar with Hanford, um, but the regional director, I don't know how much familiarity they have with Hanford. So, we're a big chunk of knowledge and work.
Yeah. We've briefed Emma about Hanford and she's very excited to come out. So I'm, I'm sure she'll want to come in August if possible still. So.
So as much as I would love to have the, the October orientation, um, I think August is going to be the piece.
No, August is perfect. So Ryan, I'm going to pass that to your action for now, right? And then we'll fit it in however we can. Okay. I apologize. I thought we talked about it yesterday. Um, membership packet, we had templates, the new templates. So I think Mia briefed about EMS SAB. So at that, they said they're still updating. Since then we have got the new packets. Um, unfortunately for Mary Ann, things, um, are just not, I don't even know how to say it. She has to switch all of the information that she had into different formatting to submit it. Um, this week slowed her down because we obviously had all of these meetings this week. Um, but we're hoping, I would say, she's going to hate me. Maybe by end of next week that we'll have those submitted so that we will be good and have those approved. So.
Well, we'll have them submitted.
Submitted.
Because yeah, there are two other sites that are anxiously awaiting their board members. I've been tech communicating with
Right.
Phyllis over at Savannah and they're down to 10 people and they are anxiously, very anxiously waiting for their people to get approved.
And they'll go by dates at this point. So even if we get our submitted first, if there's another board that has their due date sooner, then they'll get bumped to the front of the line. So, um, I'm very optimistic that we will have them before September 30.
And Kelly knows that I am anxiously watching and asking.
You guys will know when we know.
All right. I think that covers everything. We're rated to heart.
Anybody online have any last minute questions? I'm hearing.
Doesn't look like it.
Anybody? Okay. Looks like we're going to finish a little ahead of schedule. Everybody gets to go out and have lunch and relax and enjoy the sunshine. Thank you for coming and I look forward to seeing everybody or hearing everybody, um, in June with the committee meetings. So have a good day.
Have a great day, everyone. Thank you.